Each person as they present, each person, each decision made. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Let's introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For five long minutes, we recognize Dr. Caldwell, Memorial Hospital of Gulfport, to discuss children's welfare in Harrison County. Dr. Caldwell?
Thanks, everyone, for having me. I'm Dr. Caldwell. I'm one of the neonatologists at Memorial Hospital. Been there for about five years. I'm double-board certified in general pediatrics, as well as my subspecialty in neonatal-perinatal medicine. And like I said, I've been here for about five years. So, a little bit of my history. So, I'm actually Canadian. I first was sort of introduced to the CPS system when my parents decided to become foster parents when I was in college. They fostered one baby right from the hospital, as well as her sibling, for about a year because of drug abuse with parents. They also fostered a four-month-old that was discharged from the hospital with skull fractures inflicted at the hands of their parents. So, that was sort of my first introduction. I did my training and residency in New York, and there I was able to start doing the actual, as a mandated reporter, the reports to CPS. I was taking care of these children in the clinic. I was identifying abuse, neglect, sexual abuse, physical trauma. I was taking care of them in pediatric ICU. And then I went on to Connecticut, where I did my subspecialty training in neonatal-perinatal medicine. And there I continued on with making reports to CPS. And I'll tell you, my experiences in these other places, if you so much as have marijuana in your system as a mother, you may not get your child back at that time. Harder drugs, things like methamphetamines, heroin, things like that, it's an absolute no-brainer. Those babies do not go home with their parents. So, you can imagine my surprise when I came here to South Mississippi and found out that my, you know, babies with methamphetamines, fentanyl, all of these are going home to their parents. And there's really nothing that I can do about it. And that's the frustrating part. To further complicate this matter, if myself or my nurses are noticing safety concerns, and we're documenting safety concerns, and we're relaying this to CPS, these babies are still going home with their parents. Nothing's being done. It's falling on deaf ears. And we're starting to get jaded, and we're starting to get frustrated by this. And it's to the point where sometimes, you know, we're so nervous at the time of discharge because we're wondering, when am I going to see this baby back in the ER with problems? When am I going to see them back malnourished, neglected, with physical abuse? When am I going to see them on the news dead? And that's really where this is all coming from. So, I can say, you know, over the past year, I've, without getting into specifics, I've had babies that I've readmitted to the NICU with malnourishment, with neglect. I've readmitted, coming through the ER, basically knocking on death's door. I've heard of babies coming back with broken bones, and I've seen babies in the news that we have all. And these are all cases where we've put in safety concerns before discharge from the NICU that we didn't feel that this was a safe discharge plan. And we're seeing them in the news coming up dead. So, this is kind of where we're at. So, this is why we've kind of decided to make this multidisciplinary committee so that we can start addressing these problems and figuring out real-time solutions. At Memorial, we've already started to implement involving law enforcement sooner if we're having trouble hearing back from CPS in a timely manner. I can tell you that we do not have a direct line to CPS for the on-call social worker. If it's an evening or a weekend, we at the hospital are not even trusted with that information, and it's kind of be very difficult to get ahold of them. I've heard that the number of CPS cases, our children in CPS custody have been going down in the community, but our numbers at the hospital have only been going up from a number of reports in the past couple of years. So, I don't understand where that difference is coming from. So, the big bottom line is, is that these things aren't happening in other states, and I don't know why we're allowing it to happen in our state. I don't know why we're allowing this to happen to our most vulnerable population, that we have major safety concerns, and it's just falling on deaf ears.
Have you had a chance to speak to whoever's in charge of Child Protection Agency? And why you have these difficulties getting in touch with people?
That's an excellent question. I have made two personal phone calls, and I've gotten nowhere to Ms. Sanders, who's the commissioner of CPS. And I've gotten no phone calls back.
Okay.
So, this is why we need to have this committee. We need to do something. You know, this is my home now.
Find a little bit about the committee that you're talking about. Its composition, what your plans are with it.
So, at the moment, our plans are going to meet quite frequently. We've got judicial members. We've got attorneys. We've got healthcare professionals. We have social workers. We have sheriff's office. We even have the just from the coroner's office as well, all coming together to see, you know, problem solve, what we're seeing, what's happening, and what we can do better to better serve our population.
And I'll just step in now, doctor, unless you have anything else you'd like to share. So, we've met every Friday for the past few months, and I'll read this resolution that our attorney helped us draft. It's the Blue Ribbon Committee Oversight for Child Protection. We're wearing these blue ribbons. And I will give you personal details. We're calling him Baby DJ, but we weren't even aware of this baby's plight until a local reporter put it in a newspaper because we are kept completely in the dark. Numbers are kept from us. This four-month-old was born on fentanyl into her department. He was sent home even after calls to CPS, nothing done. At eight weeks, we heard he had three broken bones. Again, the pediatrician called, nothing done. At four months, he was dead at his father's hands, who is allegedly, he is in for capital murder in our Harrison County jail now. His mother has also been incarcerated for her part in it. At four months, he died. And what we are hearing from the coroner's office and other medical professionals is that this four-month-old baby had 16 broken bones in his autopsy. So, you can imagine it, all the different phases of healing. So, from birth in fentanyl, he somehow survived and was tortured for the rest of his four months until he was finally killed. This is the impetus that I've had enough. All in child protection have had enough. It must end. Here's our order creating a Blue Ribbon Committee on Child Protection within Harrison County, whereas numbers relating to the abuse, torture, and unfortunately, death of children within Harrison County continues to rise. Whereas in many of these instances, no action is taken by either Child Protective Services and/or the Harrison County Youth Court Judge to remove these children from their at-risk environments. Whereas child advocates within Harrison County seek to collaborate to independently investigate child protection failures within our county in order to implement a coordinated approach of intervention in reports involving alleged child sexual abuse, physical abuse, exploitation, and neglect to ensure that the children of Harrison County are protected. Whereas Mississippi Code Annotated 193401972, as amended, provides that this Board of Supervisors of any county shall have the power to adopt any orders, resolutions, or ordinances with respect to county affairs, property, and finances for which no specific provision has been made by general law and are not inconsistent with Mississippi Constitution. Whereas Mississippi Annotated Code 1972, as amended, authorizes a county to create a Department of Public Welfare to provide protective services for children. Whereas the Board is of the opinion that the creation of this Blue Ribbon Committee to review, analyze, and make recommendations regarding the implementation of a coordinated approach of intervention in reports involving alleged child sexual abuse, physical abuse, exploitation, and neglect to ensure that children of Harrison County are protected. Now, therefore, be it ordered, and we still have to vote on this, of course, ordered by the Board of Supervisors of Harrison County, the findings, conclusions, and statements of fact contained in the foregoing preamble are hereby adopted after our vote. The members are well-respected people in this community who care deeply for children and feel we have been kept in the dark. Further, the following persons have knowledge and expertise in the field of child abuse in Harrison County shall be appointed to this committee: Troy Peterson, retired Harrison County Sheriff; Beth Casey, therapist and respected retired Harrison County Youth Court Administrator; Jeanie Heron, Friends of Court Director and Harrison County Advocacy Center Liaison; Haley Zelenka, Vice President and General Counsel of Memorial Hospital in Gulfport; Dr. Jennifer A. Caldwell, M.D., neonatologist at Memorial; Dr. Carl Lepoe, retired law enforcement and professor at William Carey University; as well as Kim Haney, local attorney and child advocate and adoptive mother; and Debbie Davis, Director of Women's and Children's Services at Memorial Hospital. I would like to take a motion to ratify the Blue Ribbon Committee and put this resolution on the record, please.
Chair, here's the motion. Do I hear a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for discussion. Any discussion?
The only question I have is, whereas, as amended, authorizes a county to create a Department of Public Welfare to provide protective services for children. So, does this order do that? Or it just gives us the right to do that?
It's just appointing the Blue Ribbon Committee to... The county has authority over child welfare. It's the point of citing that statute.
So, at this point, this doesn't do that? This just gives us the authority?
You're creating... That's the authority the county has over child protective welfare. So, all the resolution does is create the Blue Ribbon Committee. My assumption is they will come back and make recommendations.
With recommendations later?
Yes.
That's my understanding.
Yes, and it's all volunteers. It won't cost us a penny. And they will be meeting frequently and making sure, checking the numbers, seeing that the numbers match, seeing that no child falls through the cracks. And really, an oversight and a recommendation committee, not a commission, but a recommendation oversight committee.
So, we're using this statutory authority to create the committee?
That's correct. To decide it and make recommendations to the Board, then the Board will decide what direction it can go from there. That was my understanding of what the Blue Ribbon Committee wants.
I have no further questions.
Yeah, well, the... I have one.
Okay.
Yes, the committee. I'm just looking over the names here. Is this a representation of perhaps county general?
I believe so. I think it's people who are extremely knowledgeable with the expertise, you know, as she said.
I mean, when was the selection committee? I just, I'm totally new to this, though. I don't know what's going on.
I think what you want to know, how the committee was selected?
Yeah. And who was part of the... Who selected the committee?
Well, we just... Troy, the former sheriff and I spoke. Jeanie Heron is already working for the county in advocacy. These are just, I mean, if anyone else would like to volunteer who has, you know, decades of child expertise and protection, they're certainly welcome.
Can you bring it up?
I'm thinking, just like I said. Just totally new to me.
I emailed you. I'm sorry. I should have texted you to see that you got it.
I'm just not in the position to vote on anything until I have a chance to look at it a bit more.
Okay.
That's just me.
You have another question?
I mean, I'm just looking. I'm...
You made a motion.
I follow your recommendation, so what I want to do?
He can make another motion.
No, I'll just abstain. Not the vote.
Is there someone you'd like to see added to this board?
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, as I'm saying, I have no idea. I have to look at it.
I apologize. I emailed it Wednesday. It's a holiday, actually, so maybe it's...
You could always add to the...
I don't have a problem with the committee. I just want to make sure this doesn't turn into some sort of financial...
Oh, no. This is all volunteers.
We're going to county because we already stuck out here with millions of dollars in reference to mental illness. I don't want to create another issue.
Let's do this. What's... I'm going to amend her motion to where, if we want to add someone to, we can make a recommendation.
You can make a substitute motion.
Yeah. Make a recommendation. If you want to think about it, there's somebody you want to add.
Make a substitute motion.
Will you... Yeah. You want to do that, or you want him to?
You want to vote on the first motion, and then he can add? Or you want me to take the motion?
No, you need to amend your motion.
Okay.
You can amend it, or he can make a substitute motion to include that.
Okay, I'll amend it. You want to do that, Ken?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to ratify the Blue Ribbon Oversight Committee, and any Board of Supervisor could...
Add a committee member.
Who is qualified or who's interested.
You second that motion?
I'll sit.
All right. I think we... Any further discussion? Here are none, all in favor, taken by aye.
Aye.
Go the vote by no. Motion, motion carries. Dan, are you with us?
Yes, sir. I'm opposed to the thing. I agree.
All in favor, taken by aye?
Aye.
Go the vote by no. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, doctor.
Recognize Melissa Wade, Mrs. Department of Child Protection Services, and discuss all facilitation and space for Mississippi Department of Child Protection Services and the memorandum of agreement for rental rights. Ms. Wade?
Good morning, Board. My name's Melissa Wade. I am the Director of Administration for Child Protection Services. I come before you this morning to re-engage in a conversation that we briefly touched on probably around this time last year. It was around budget season in relation to our split from the Department of Human Services. We have come to a place now, a year of building out and growing through the pains of establishing a new agency to where we can kind of refocus back on our county-level memorandums of agreement and getting leases in place so that we can, one, be a good partner with the county to provide financial means for the space that we're in, and also allow us to better do our jobs for your county by giving us a more feasible and professional work environment. So, to tell you about the space that we're currently in, we are over by the jail, correct? Over in Gulfport. We have a staff of 98 frontline social workers, which includes our wellbeing side and our safety side. Wendelin Bostick is our Assistant Deputy Commissioner over Safety and Investigations. So, she'll be here to speak on some of the numbers of our staff in that area. We're still understaffed. We're looking to hire about another 21 to 25 more social workers for this county. We have 15 workers working remotely because we do not have space for them, and we probably have five to 10 clerical staff. We are currently in the building with DHS. And I will say, at this current moment, there are probably more offices where we have doubled and tripled up than we are with single offices, to the point that we even have staff now doing medical accommodations so that we have to provide them with a personal, one-person office, which is causing even more trouble trying to keep us staffed and in the building doing work where we can be held accountable for the work that we're doing. We do not have the appropriate common spaces to do our jobs either. We have limited visitation areas. We're having the makeshift offices into playrooms and places for our families to meet with their children or to do family planning with these families to try to help prevent them from coming into custody. I'll let Wendelin speak on the numbers for the county right now, and then I'll take it. I'll kind of talk you through the process of what we're looking to do as far as space, but just to give you some information from our side.
So, again, my name is Wendelin Bostick. I'm the Assistant Deputy Commissioner for Child Safety for the six coastal counties. And so, specific to Harrison County, as Melissa's already said, we have about 100 frontline staff that's there. There's staff that deals directly with families, supervisors that assist and support them and guide them through the investigative process as well as the casework process. She's spoken about the staff that we are still needing, which is about 27 additional people that we need on, and then roughly about 10 to 15 people that are working remotely because we do not have the adequate space. The training space is an issue as well. Like, we don't have adequate space to provide our staff with, you know, day-to-day training or hands-on training. We share that conference room space, which we utilize as a training space, with the people that are in the building, EA that's in the building as well. And so, sometimes, that doesn't always coordinate. Again, we don't have adequate space for our family visitation rooms or anything like that. It's really becoming very difficult for us to keep staff in... Well, I'm not going to say difficult for us to keep staff, but difficult for us to maintain quality work with the two to three people to an office. As she spoke of, there are accommodations that are coming in from our specialists and our staff that are doing the work who have justified reasons for wanting a single office space. And so, if that catches me, this naturally going to bring some concern for us. But again, they do have justification. Imagine having three people to an office, and you're trying to document, you're trying to make follow-up calls, phone calls, and you're even trying to staff or speak with your clients. It's very difficult in that situation, given the lot of work that we do. So, spacing is really an issue for us, and we're coming to the board for ways to do it.
Did you... Did you have... Have you done any investigation as to locating a space that would be suitable for you?
So, how this has kind of worked, and this was kind of going to... This is what I wanted to speak to you about, how I've dealt with it in other counties where we are obviously having this same problem across the state. With the Olivia Y lawsuit, for us to get out of that lawsuit, we have to staff appropriately to get the case load down per worker. That is causing an overabundance of employees in every county, but even harder in our bigger counties. Typically, I like to start working with the county administrator first as he would have more knowledge of the county than I would in locating space. Typically, I've worked with either economic development groups within the county that find several locations and have us come visit those. If it is on us to locate the space, I mean, I can do that. I just don't know what's willing to be spent, how much fair footage you're willing to do for us. Like, there's a lot... There's several more conversations that need to be had past this. Typically, the state looks at 300 square feet per employee. So, to say that, we're looking at about 40,000 square feet that we're going to need to appropriately staff for offices and all of the common spaces that we will need to provide services to the children and families of your county.
Let me ask you something, clarify something as far as the county involvement and getting and working with you on the space. Why doesn't the state do that?
Sir, I do not know, statute.
Why doesn't the state... Why isn't it their responsibility since you're a Department of State to go out and find your locations and take care of whatever needs you have? Why does it fall back on the county? And I don't really have an objection to doing that. I'm just simply asking you, why is it on us, on the county, to locate and provide space for a state agency?
Well, I think, in the long run, sir, we're partners. We come in and take care of the children and family of your county. And I think it's a partnership. And so, in that, we split in those responsibilities. Now, I can't say what has been before me in what we've paid or the agency has been willing to pay to the county to help in some of those costs. What I can say is, as we move forward with our memorandum of agreement with the county, we are able to pay 50% of the fair market value of any space that is given to us. So, if it's $100 per square foot, we can reimburse you 50% plus half utilities and any other services that would be provided. So, we do want to start giving back to the county so that it can be a partnership. And I want to make sure that we give you as much as we possibly can. It's part of a federal cost share that we're allowed to use. And so, you know, every four or five years, we want to redo that memorandum of agreement so that we run new comps and make sure we're paying you the equitable amount that we can give you.
You mentioned the... You mentioned the Olivia Y lawsuit, and that's why we're having to ramp up to do more child protection. That was in 2004.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to give you all an idea.
Yes, ma'am. It is a 20-year lawsuit.
20-year-old federal mandate consent decree that Mississippi is still failing. We are still failing under that federal mandate. In August of last year, when you came before us and asked then, you said 22,000 square feet. I found a Realtor. I went and looked at buildings personally, and it was crickets. No offense. I know you've had some issues, but it's frustrating.
Yes, ma'am. I totally understand that. It is frustrating for me as well.
And I don't understand. Here we are a year later, about to do budget hearings again. Also, just to note, on Maple's campus in Gulfport, CPS used our building B for two and a half years, and we never got a penny from rent. So, I would like to say that if we do this, that we should be able to be paid by CPS as promised.
Yes, ma'am. And I will say that any payments prior to this would have been through DHS and not CPS as we were a part of that agency.
Right.
And so, that is the reason for me to be here today, is to split that away and put in a new agreement that you have directly with Child Protection Services and not through another agency.
And to note again, DHS and Child Protection were split because federally we were failing so badly, DHS was forced to call it CPS. So, it's still, it's Child Protective Services, but no offense, same game, different name is what we're dealing with. And I know you were thrown into this after you left another part of the agency, but 20... You're saying 40,000 square feet?
Yes, ma'am.
So, this building is about 36,000 square feet. So, it would be something as massive as that.
Yes, ma'am.
Just to put it in perspective for all of you.
So, I guess my question to the board is, how would you like to proceed? Who would be my point of contact? Where would we start those talks? And meeting with a Realtor is fine. I just have always felt, and I'm doing this all over the state, I've only gotten one memorandum signed in a year because of this process and working through it. It's not easy locating space, building space out, doing what is needed to get us the end. It does take time, and we have had growing pains. But I'm here before you today to fix those.
Your point of contact would be Mr. Robert Collins, the county administrator.
Okay.
So, that's who you'd be contacting.
Perfect. Well, I will reach out, and we will set up a time to sit and go through things.
Could we maybe go see the building you're currently in just to kind of wrap our minds around what y'all are going through?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions to the board?
I have one if the board doesn't...
Yes, sir.
...board does, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Can we get the commissioner to return Dr. Caldwell's telephone call?
Oh, yes, sir. I promise you, Ms. Bostick and I have already discussed, and I will be in the office tomorrow. So, I will make sure that she gets that message.
I have small grandchildren, and I sit here and listen to some of those things with these babies, and it's upsetting.
Well, I can attest and personally say Well, I, I can attest and personally say that Commissioner Sanders works diligently every single day to take care of the children of this state, and we have seen progress over the last few years of her time in the state. And I will personally make sure that she reaches out.
Ms. Wade, to be honest with you, somewhat disconcerting when a, a medical doctor, a pediatrician sits in and tells us she can't make contact with your department.
Yes, sir.
The concern she has, that, that is very disconcerting.
Yes, sir, I, and I, unfortunately, I don't work on that side of the house, so I can take those messages back and get the right people in touch.
Well, that's who needs, somebody, somebody, right people need to get involved and get it taken care of.
Yes, sir.
One man's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Collins will be contacted. Any, any, before you leave, Ms. Wade, any questions from the members of the board?
There's also a 1-800 number, the doctors only have the same 1-800 number that anyone would call from a payphone. So I would also request that they have an actual phone number to call and report.
A cell phone number that they can get contact, a 1-800 number, it's just ridiculous.
An anonymous line, yeah.
Actually, the hotline, just so everyone knows, comes directly to our agency.
Right, but these doctors are telling us they are literally not being called back. They make, they make a, a statement on the phone, and it's like they're anyone off the street. These are doctors caring for our babies, and they need a phone number, please.
Yes, ma'am, I, I totally agree, and I'm going to take all of y'all's information back.
Thank you, Ms. Wade.
Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize Ms. Bernadette Megas to discuss damage to vehicle on June 12, 2024 by county equipment.
Good morning, thank you for your time.
Just give the name and address for the record.
Yes, sir, my name is Bernadette Megas. My residential address is 13043 Miles Drive, Gulfport. The address where the incident occurred is, was at my place of business, and it is 11125 Canal Road, Gulfport.
Just tell them what, what happened.
As I said, I was at work, I worked for Dray's Construction, like, located on Canal Road. I was parked in our parking lot, and some county mowers were coming through. There is a patch of grass here, parking lot is here, and then there's a patch of grass here. Unfortunately, I have a picture of where my car was parked, but I did not take a picture where the grassy areas are.
And just perfect, the grass, apparently where the, certain, the object was shot out and hit your vehicle.
Yes, sir.
Was that, was it cut in county, I assume that was county right away, he was cutting on?
That's my assumption from when I called, when I called the public department. When I called the Public Safety Department, that was the impression I was given. And like I said, he, there, there was a part of concrete area where our parking lot is. I actually heard the no, the noise and sitting at my desk, and we made the little comment, I said, you better not break my windshield. And sure enough, I got in my car approximately 2:30, 3 o'clock, and I did have a crack, a J-shaped crack on my windshield. I do have pictures of, from my driveway that morning, that'll show you that I do not have a crack in my windshield. This is the area that I'm discussing where there's no grass, but we could still hear where the, the blades were down. This picture shows the rock that was right there in the windshield area along with the crack. So I did submit two quotes as requested by your offices, uh, by the safety department. One for $457 from Dunway Glass, another for 45531 from Safelite. As a patron of Dunway Glass, I would prefer to keep our county dollars local if possible, so I would prefer to use Dunway Glass.
Well, let me get, what you're saying is that that mower was in gravel, it wasn't grass?
Yes, sir.
Well, as I understand, nobody sawed it, anything, you just heard it?
Correct, yes, sir.
Nobody observed it?
We're right back where we always are with this in reference to liability, Tim.
This one's a little bit more difficult, Glenn, and I'll tell you why. Because we had a claim one time where exactly that happened, that mower did not lift the blade.
That's why I asked that question.
And threw out the rocks. If, if she hadn't heard that happen, I would say she had no proof, but having heard the rocks get thrown through, however you say it, and then seeing the rock on the windshield, she probably has enough to, if he didn't lift the blade, he should have.
He should have.
It cost a problem.
And so for someone who works for a construction company, I understand when operating equipment, I get the, the noises, or it gets loud in there, and I get a little frustrated when traffic's passing them. I understand, I don't think it was an intentional thing, I just wanna make that clear, but I mean, unfortunately, an accident did occur, and I'm.
Never intentional, just.
Exactly.
And I think the board has enough to, to test us, what's more likely than not occurred based on the fact that this lady heard the blades hit the rocks and the noise, and then observed actually the rock on the windshield broken.
And I think we've had this, I've seen you answer that before, and we would, uh, I would assume the road department was instructed when you come, approach gravel area to lift those machines.
Lift the car, wave up.
And I would recommend that
Wouldn't recommend to the board that.
Road department investigate why that lift was in front of that, mower was not lifted.
How much is the sales tax on Dunaway, absolutely, see if we can save that for a little bit of money, probably not much.
And I may, I may be able to work with Teresa at Dunaway myself.
I think that I, I can appreciate what she's saying, but I think we need to take the low quote. I can appreciate that, but the low quote.
Approximately $24, so if we could get Dunaway away for sales tax, we would be right there, actually less than.
If Dunaway were to build the county directly, we don't, the county doesn't have to pay the sales tax.
Correct.
If you want to try to save that money, but the board's right, they have to take the lower estimate, whether you choose to use Dunaway, Dunaway will be your.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the low estimate is, we need to take that. I don't think we need to get into.
All right, so that would be the Safelite quote of 45531?
So I'll make a motion to approve paying the accident claim because I think neglect was shown with the blade being down on the cement, on the pavement.
We were negligent.
Negligence, yes.
And then how the, the Safelite.
The lowest quote.
The lowest quote.
Mr. Holland, you already have a vote on that one, would you do?
Right here, a second.
They have it.
Here in a second, any further discussion?
Wait, wait just a minute.
Okay.
I think if you actually just wanna do the lowest quote, because if you take the sales tax off of Dunways, and they're willing to do that, Safelite is a national company, they're probably not gonna be willing to do it. So Dunways is actually lowest at 428, if they build the county directly, and we pay it correctly, then you would save actually $20.
Okay, if that's the case, that's fine, as long as the, as long as the bottom line is, it's less.
If Dunway to build the county directly, county doesn't pay sales tax, that's exempt from that.
Right, exactly.
The county will issue a check directly to them.
Okay.
And pay for the windshield when you have the windshield replaced.
Okay.
If they have any questions, you can feel the email, and we'll figure it out.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Any further discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. On the reports to the board, order concurring with the resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission to amend the consultancy agreement entered into by and between Harrison County Development Commission and Smart Growth America on March 5, 2024, to reflect the contract expiration date of February 28, 2025. So what you're basically asking is to extend the contract.
Yep.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion, here none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by, I'm sorry. Sure do, okay, let's get this one off, since we started. Any, uh, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Thank you, Bill, we got that taken care of. Is Tim here, just I, I don't see Tim, okay.
Tim, yeah, he, his doctor did not release him, so it would be another.
So that, that'd be another, all right, good deal, thank you, Bill.
I apologize for that.
We got one more. Yeah, we gotta go to a public here.
Okay.
Let me get to that. All right, telecall appeal filed by Russell Glavine on behalf of the residents of Rankin-Johnson Road and Bethel Road as Planning Commission's decision to approve case file. 2405HC095 for conditional use permit filed by Connor Holland for Alicia Stapleton requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a manufactured home on 4.7 acre parcel of land as shown on the site plan. The E1 buried low-density residential district requires a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission for the placement of a manufactured home. The subject property is located at 8423 Bethel Road. The available tax parcel number is 1102-10-034.000, and voting supervised at District 1.
Good morning, sir.
Mr. Nolan?
Mr. Glavine, the appellant is contesting the Planning Commission's approval for the placement of a manufactured home at 8423 Bethel Road. Both appellant and applicant are allowed three 10-minute speakers. All exhibits intended for the record shall be marked Exhibit A, B, et cetera. The appellant will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. Address any questions directly to the board, and the board will render its decision.
Thank you, Mr. Nolan, at this time, she will recognize the representative or the person itself, the, the appellant. That would be, uh, Mr. Glavine.
Sir?
Mr. Glavine.
Mr. Glavine, or, or if he, or anyone who would like to speak, I, if it's approved by Mr. Glavine, since I presume he paid the fee. Okay, go.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm here on behalf of my nephew Connor, he is an out-of-town traveling welder, so I'm speaking on his behalf.
Okay, hold on just a second, is there anybody, she, she's.
I'm on the other side.
You're on the other side.
Do we have someone on the appeal? Do we have any, Mr. Glavine?
Yes, sir.
We're here to hear your appeal, sir.
I'm sorry, sir, there, I had to go. Yes, sir, there, I've filed an appeal there for all the residents in our little community that we have out on Rankin-Johnson Road. We have 11 homes, and we all live on a dead-end street, and it's a beautiful place where we have, everybody has, you know, a little bit of acreage there with all their homes, mostly all low-density except for two. And those two there were elders that, you know, we took care of, that folk took care of. Our situation is, is that, um, when you come to our community, it's a nice home, and this, that, and the other, and it's all well-kept and everything, and our situation is, we have a guy that wants to put a trailer on the end of the property or in, on, as you're coming in to the area there, and I, we've been up here before a while back, and everybody in, in this supervisor board there sided with us and allowed us to rebut putting another trailer out there, or any trailer, for that matter. And this guy there come along and picked up that piece of property there, and, and then decided he wanted to put a trailer, and and we all back up here again. The last time we came here, you know, I was assured, all of us were assured that, um, that there was one guy that had a little trailer down there, and he needed to replace his trailer. And, you know, that's no big deal there, so we said, yeah, the guy needs a new trailer down there, but there's no other, there's no trailer nowhere. So we don't want, and I, I came to the board, and came to the meeting, and I asked outright, I says, now, this is not gonna tarnish anything that we've already been up here, and I was assured that it didn't by letting him replace it, a, a, a unit down there, wouldn't tarnish any of the efforts that we have put forth over the years to keep our community in the character that it is, just all nice homes and no trailers and stuff in there, you know? Although, we don't have the law of covenant, I'm, I'm an honest person. And I just come to a conclusion and a realization last night, I told my wife, I said, boy, I sure missed, wish Mr. Noah Johnson was still here with us, and Mr. Frank Hudson and all that bunch, because they were the elders, and my wife looked over there and she said,
It's you now.
You're the elder. And then it dawned on me. So I'm here in behalf of our family, our, our community families, which they're all working feverishly right now in order to make ends meet and pay for their house and stuff. In my, uh, appeal, I put that it was nine homeowners, but it's actually 11 homes. Two of the home, two of the people that's on there own two homes. And they got their families, or, or, you know, some, some part of their family or close friends living in them homes as well, so this is actually 11 homes here, not nine as I had put in there under the home owners. So anyway, the long and short of it is, we sure like to just keep our, the character of our our community there, and our community there, uh, is beautiful and pretty and, and, and just as you see it now, and we don't wanna change it up and make it any lesser or depreciate the value of anybody's home and stuff. Everybody's struggling nowadays, and we don't, you know, anybody wants to come in, we we'll help anybody build a house if we can, you know what I mean? We just wanna try to keep the place there as, just like y'all got this beautiful place here. You don't wanna put a, a big green desk over here with all this pretty wood stuff, you know? That's the situation we have. And I sure hope y'all see it my way y'all had before, once before. And, and I, I don't see, there's only two people that's not here that were here last time I had the meeting with y'all. And y'all all backed us, and I don't know why y'all would change up mind now.
Okay, let, let me add a clarification, has this property been on the appeal before to this board, or was it to the commission?
The 4.7 acres, I don't believe was under appeal. Now, if you look at the map of Rankin-Johnson, you've got, you've got nine parcels that go down, go down the roadway with, like you said, 11 houses on, on the, the dead-end street. There's one house facing Bethel on east of Rankin-Johnson, and then this parcel was a 4.7 acre parcel just east of that house off of, off of Rankin-Johnson.
Ma'am, I'm just gonna make clear, it appears that what he's saying, he's been here before, the board, before this board before.
Is that saying this property?
Yeah.
This board?
I, I went to the planning commission meeting, and then we had a board meeting.
This, the board is supervised.
Right, but it was in Gulfport.
Okay.
I didn't have any group.
Yeah, I can.
I didn't realize that it had been.
And, and anyway, and, and, and sir, there, uh, Mr. Holland, you, you were present.
At that time, too, that, that'd be two years.
But anyway, the long and the short of it is, something else I wanna bring up that just dawned on me last night. You said 4.7 acres, correct?
That's what it says in the application.
If y'all look at it on a map, part of that property is across the street. So I tell you, I got 4.7 acres, and I wanna put a trailer on it. And I put it right here, and half that property, I don't know how much is across the street, but I, I know it's not half. But if one-third or whatever the, that's actually a smaller piece of property you're putting on, and now y'all giving me permission here and here, if you understand what I'm saying. So this is, you know, this is not, this is not, you know, this is not somebody just don't want something, this is, we trying to take care of our community, and this is a solid tax base that's been there. And, you know, everybody votes, and you know, it's all thick, we all take care of each other. And I'm here because everybody else gotta work, or had passed away. I wanna, I almost wanna, I almost wanna bring tears in my eyes when I think about it, you know? Because I, we've lost two great people in our community the last couple of years. Anyway, I'll leave it at that, so.
Okay.
Quick question.
Yes, any question?
The, the other piece of this property is across Bethel Road?
There, I'm not, I'm not.
The other part of this property?
There's part of it on one side of Bethel Road, part of it on, I'm gonna say the north, or northeast and the southwest side of those, that road are, is the 4.7. I have the same situation at my house, I own part of the person's front yard across the street.
I see, I got that. It's a very small portion.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, I have the same situation at my house, they, when they put the road in, my property lying on the other side of the street, and the other guy's yard. But, you know, he keeps it clean and mows it, we're all happy, you know, and it's a beautiful place.
Just so the board knows, the application is only to put a mower home on the southern, south of Bethel Road.
On the one, oh, yeah.
It does mention 4.7 acres, but the diagram and image and the conditional use permit would only be on the, I wanna say south of Bethel Road, I'm not sure that's south, looks like.
Yeah, it's kinda south and east, it's south, south and east, you know?
I guess it would.
What you're saying is if, if we're.
Granted, it was gonna be.
On that particular piece of property on what you think is the south side of Bethel Road.
Well, I'm not here to contest that, I'm just, just saying, you know?
Well, he's just clarifying to us if we do oppose the appeal, where the, where it would be.
Secondarily, there, because of the smaller area we're talking about, that puts it even, what we, I mean, they got probably some kind of setback you got there, but that puts it further over toward my home and my daughter's home, which is, uh, up against, my daughter owns the house, and property up against this one.
Okay.
And I'm, I'm kinda here in behalf of her, too, there, she, she like, all right, she's hard at work.
All right.
Like y'all.
All right.
Am I to sit down or what?
If you, if you finish, are you?
Yes, sir, I don't, I can't think of anything else to tell you except help me out, leave me out.
All right, Mr. Glavine, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am, now we'll hear from the, uh, let's, well, that's about it for the time.
Excellent.
Yes, ma'am.
My notes are on my phone, so I'm gonna, my name's Adrian Holland, Connor is my nephew. He's 24 years old, and he's a traveling welder, and he's actually in Savannah, Georgia this morning, and that's why he's not here, speaking on his own behalf. My husband and I helped him secure this property, the lady actually owner-financed it to him. You can imagine as a 24-year-old boy, what it is to purchase 4.3 acre, 4.7 acres. The property is split, on the other side of Bethel is only .3 acres of property. It's not big enough to put anything over there, it's just when the road came through that separated the parcel of land. With him being 24 years old and a single man, he cannot build a house right now, it's not feasible. He wants to put something temporary so that when he does find his life partner and wanna build a family, he can purchase and build a home at that point. As you know, with the Planning Commission, if you build your first structure, your secondary structure cannot be larger than your primary structure. So if he was to build a small home right now, he can't come back later and build a three- or four-bedroom home bigger than the first structure that he's built. I just went through this at my own home, building a mother-in-law cottage. Also, not to diminish anything that Mr. Glavine said. I went and did my own research, and I'm sure you can see, there's a trailer across the street from Mr. Glavine's property. There's a nice double-wide trailer. There are also 16 other trailers within a three-mile radius of Rankin-Johnson Road, down North Carbridge, down Bethel. So as far as property value and things like that, I don't know that it's gonna do anything else. This particular property is completely wooded, we have no intentions to clear the property. The trailer is gonna go in the middle of the woods, no one's going to see it. Connor has welding equipment and things that he wants to keep secure because he travels. There's a gate already positioned at the front of the property, so you can't even see into the 4.3 acres. So we're just asking that he put a temporary trailer there.
You said a temporary?
Any question?
Sorry, I'm. You said a temporary trailer?
So he's gonna purchase a mobile home, and probably a brand-new one if I had to get. guess. Um, I know that it doesn't state in his planning, um, approval.
Application.
Application, what year, anything like that. But he's going to get a nice mobile home. But like I said, even if it was an older mobile home, no one can see it, Mr. Glavine can't even see it from his property. It's wooded. The entire four point three acres on that side is wooded.
None of these, uh, documents I've read say the word temporary, that's just why I'm asking.
It's permanent, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word, it's permanent, it's going to be his permanent residence.
It would be his permanent.
Yes, ma'am. It's going to be his permanent residence. He's living with his dad right now.
Okay. Any que, any other questions?
Not less, I need to come back up here.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll, uh, entertain a rebuttal from Mr. Glavine, if you have one.
Well, with all due respect, here, I'm not rebutting, I, I just want to, to say there, yes, we conceived the property over there, and we've seen.
Mr. Glavine, Mr. Glavine, you need to address.
We, we, I'm sorry. We conceived the property from where we had it. Our property is all cleared wide open, no woods. And, yes, there is trails three miles, and the closest one is over half a mile, other than the one that was replaced at the afterment, across the street from the guy that, that had given it, you know, because everything got tore up over there. But anyway, the long and the short of it is, is we can't see, and I, and I didn't say this earlier, but there was a trailer there years ago. The guy, there was a house there, the house burnt down. We all contributed and helped this guy. He had four young daughters and a wife. He worked for the city of Maloxi. And we all contributed and helped him in the church, helped him and gave him a trailer to put there, or helped him get a trailer to put there. They lived in that trailer for a couple of years or so, and there was just too much hardship, I guess, on it, and they disbanded, the family did. And that thing sat there, they had hobos come in it, we had to get them run out, they had all kinds of stuff happen over there, and found, the place just got to a point where animals and stuff here, there, and everywhere, they got, finally got to a point where it was uninhabitable for anything, you might say. So, anyway, that's one we all vowed, you know, in our, our community, we just need to, to watch what's going on here and try to do what we can to have people put homes here permanent, tax drug, a permanent place to live. And, you know, uh, I'm not a lawyer or anything like that, but, uh, I would surely hope that if a man built him a smaller home, at some point in time, he could have argued if he wanted to. I might have, that's a matter of permit or whatever. I don't think that, that what you build and what you got to live in, I don't think that, that would be right. I'm not trying to correct anybody, I'm just, just saying, if people add on to their houses all the time. So, thank you, and I won't say another word.
Just Mr. Glavine, a quick question, Mr. Glavine.
Yes, sir, I'm listening.
There's a photograph, an aerial photograph in the file, has a purple, uh, aerial drone, which is the subject property, and you look like, is, is your house southwest of the corner of that piece of property?
Yes.
And there's a trailer across Rankin Johnson Road? That's the one you're referencing, I'm just showing you.
That was the one I was referencing earlier.
And then, looking north of that, there's a pond that looks like it's kind of silted in, and a house, two houses, it looks like, on one piece of property. One of those looks like a trailer.
Yes.
It's not a trailer?
There's only one trailer.
Just the way the length of it is, that it's.
And it may be an older, uh, photograph, I don't know how current it is, they just put that there, and I'm not putting anybody's business in the street, but they're probably picking the haul it off, because they, they, uh, they getting divorced.
I'm just trying to orient the.
Yeah, well, I owned a big pond in the back, the larger pond that's to the, I'm going to say the east and south.
Yeah, that's.
And it's all wide open, all the way to this lady's property here, and my daughter's property has joined mine, and, um, and then I own the next piece of property going to the, uh, to the west, I own that home, too. And, and there's a nice young man that lives in that home there, and I didn't think I want, I should bring him into this, so I just said homeowners, whenever I put it in.
Mr. Glavine, do you live on the corner of Bethel and Rankin? Or do you, are you the second home?
I'm the third.
The third home, so your, your home is not in this picture?
It's on that map, it's called image, if you look at your list.
Yeah, that, well, it's not, do you live on the same side of the road as the subject piece of property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not showing then, up in that?
Yeah, you, you could imagine, when you walk in my backyard, like I say, it's just like a golf course there, and you just look straight across, all you see is that area where they put the crack. Everything else is wide open and grass and move.
I don't see your home, if your home is the third one, I don't see it on this picture.
Let me show you this, and you tell me which one it is. Subject property is in purple.
A guy's property is in purple.
Yes, sir.
All right, what I'm going to do there is, all right, that's Bethel Road, that is property, and I'm going to say this is Rankin Johnson.
This is Rankin Johnson.
This is Rankin Johnson. This is my, uh, this is my, uh.
That one's far, it's.
Oh, okay, well, no, you, you are correct, sir, you cannot see my property.
Okay, so your property does not touch his?
No, my daughter's does, which has joined mine.
Okay, so is your daughter's the one directly south of the hill?
That you can see in there.
Is hers directly on the, um, Rankin Johnson Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so hers is the second property.
Yes.
Yours is the third.
Yes, sir.
All right, just trying to figure out.
The very first one is Mr. B.B. Kates.
Okay, and, but hi, his entrance is on Bethel?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, he got two, but, yes, sir, yes. And, 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 uh, Mr. B.B. is on that, uh, sign, signing of that, uh, I'm going to call a petition or whatever, just to ask y'all to, or whatever, that he don't want to see the trailers over there either. And he will be able to reach across the fence on it. Not, this is not me, if you understand, it's just not.
Okay, Mr. Glavine, thank you. Uh, I do want to note Supervisor Quavis, uh, is on the phone, has, if, if, if any comments, anything, Supervisor Quavis? Dan, are you with us?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Uh, no, there's no comments, I've been, I've been listening to both sides, but no comments to add.
All right, uh, the chair, at this time, would entertain a motion, uh.
Can I clarify something real quick, just for one? Uh, the comment that was made that you couldn't build a smaller house and then build a bigger house, uh, typically, guest houses have to be, can, can only be one-half the square footage of the main house. We've never turned down anybody wanting to build a big house in the county.
Like a house.
That had a, say they had an eight-hundred-square-foot, uh, first house, if they came in and wanted to do a, a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot house in front of it, we've never turned them down, stuff like that.
Thank, thank you. Okay. Here, uh, do, the chair will entertain a motion.
Can I say one more thing?
Normally you don't, but I will give you, just, just a minute.
I just want to tell you one thing, because I, I feel like my nephew's being attacked, and he is a good kid, and I mean, he's twenty-four years old, and he works his butt off, so to hear an older gentleman talk about how they built their community and stuff, why wouldn't you welcome someone like that? The, the next thing I'm going to say, the reason that he's putting a trailer there, have you seen the interest rates right now on building a home, the cost of what it costs to build a home? He wants to do something now that he can sell and get rid of, and build his permanent residence when he meets his future wife and have children.
Okay, thank you. All right, we've heard, uh, any, any, the chair will entertain a motion. Dan, do you have anything?
I'm going to support whatever Dan does on this district.
That's why, that's why I'm trying. There's a delay, the reason, excuse me, Dan, there's a delay in this phone system, so that's why there's, he needs a little time. Okay, Dan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, sir, I would take the motion to table it until I return. I would like to do my, my own due diligence, uh, for both parties, uh, so I would make a motion to table it until my return, until I can look into both, uh, both of their issues, and then go from there.
Okay, I, I have a motion on table to, uh, on, on the floor to table, do I hear a second?
Nathan.
Nathan, uh, any further discussion?
One clarification, the board's going to table it for Mr. Quavis not to continue the hearing.
Right.
But to make the decision only.
That's right.
So, they don't, they don't have to come back as long as.
No continuous hearing.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion? We're not all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no motion carried. So, what we've done is table, and, and we'll make the decision later. Thank, thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right, next item, next item is another appeal, an appeal filed by Gina Pepe for D.A., for D.N.A. Underground L.L.C. dusted the garment of the planning commission's decision to deny case file two-four-oh-six-H-C-one-two-seven for a conditional use permit filed by Gina, Gina Pepe for D.N.A. Underground, requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a medical cannabis dispensary on twenty-one-point-five-acre parcel of land as shown on the site plan. The C-two General Commercial District requires a conditional use permit from the planning commission to operate a medical cannabis dispensary, subject property located eight-two-eight-eight Fire Tower Road Unit C, the Avalon Park Parcell, number zero-three-one-zero-dash-two-five-dash-oh-oh-five dot zero-zero-two, voting for by the District Three.
Mr. Glavine again. Uh, Ms. Pepe, the appellant is contesting the planning commission's denial to operate a medical cannabis dispensary. The location is a new strip mall being built on the east side of Fire Tower Road, just north of Bucky's side, between the, the existing Dollar General and the El Patron Mexican Restaurant. Both appellant and applicant are allowed three ten-minute speakers. All exhibits intended for the record shall be marked in A, B, et cetera. The appellant will be allowed five-minute rebuttal. Address, address any board questions, and then the board will render a decision.
Okay, so twenty-one-point-five acres is, is a.
That's the size, that's the size of the huge parcel. He's, he, she's going to be in a, a, the first building of a two-building development.
It's a rental.
It's a rental.
It'll be a rental.
Yep.
Okay. This time, the chair will recognize anyone who would like to, and support the appeal.
Morning, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Philip Chapman, I'm an attorney with Hagwood and Tipton in Madison, I'm here on behalf of Ms. Pepe. Uh, going to speak to y'all for a few minutes here first this morning, we also have Ms. Pepe herself and, uh, Mr. Bill Ladner, who is going to speak on her behalf, uh, so I'll try to be quick, let them get through you. One thing I would say first is sort of a correction, uh, I heard when you read it out, it's listed as Unit C, uh, in that first strip mall, it is actually going to be Unit H, uh, which is farther inland off away from, from Fire Tower Road, so it's actually the last unit in that particular building, farthest away from the street, um, just so y'all are aware of that. Uh, we'd like to thank y'all for the opportunity to speak to you today about this and to bring this appeal. As you've heard, uh, Ms. Pepe has requested a conditional use for a medical cannabis dispensary here in Harrison County, uh, which was initially denied by the Planning and Zoning Committee, uh, based solely on the argument that it was incompatible with the neighborhood. Uh, this was an argument that was raised by the attorney for Bucky's, which is, I think everybody probably knows, is being built, uh, across the street from there. Um, currently, as far as I know, that Bucky's is not going to be operational until at least 2025, uh, we're obviously looking to move in earlier than that, so it's an individual that's not actually in the neighborhood they're complaining about just yet, um, just want to point that out. Uh, having reviewed the transcript and the minutes from the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, uh, there are no findings or even any arguments that this proposed use is going to be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community, uh, that it would interfere with traffic, uh, that it would be detrimental to persons' property or the general welfare due to production of any excessive smoke, noise, use, glare, odor, et cetera, so, or that it would be detrimental to the property benefit. So, really, all we're talking about is this sort of nebulous idea put forth in opposition, uh, that it's not a good fit to be across the street from Bucky's. Now, I've been to several Bucky's, I appreciate Bucky's for what it is, um, it is a family-friendly place, it is a large place, it does a lot of business, end of the day, it is just a gas station. Um, it's the gas station going in the neighborhood that already currently is going to have, a liquor store in the same strip mall as the dispensary, a smoke shop, which is CBD, kratom, all that kind of stuff, in the same strip center as the dispensary. These are businesses that are allowed to do a lot more than a medical dispensary is in terms of advertising, um, they're able to put things in their windows, uh, put signs on the street that a dispensary is not allowed to do under state regulations, I'm sure the board is well aware, uh, that the medical dispensary, uh, industry now is currently legal in Mississippi, the legislature has deemed to let it go forward. They are strictly regulated by the Department of Revenue and its Alcohol Beverage Control Division. All of these things are going to keep it in line, uh, and it's not going to be an eyesore to the neighborhood and the community. Um, there are certain things they're allowed to put out on their signs, there are certain things they are not allowed to. They cannot, uh, advertise anything with anything that's attractive to children, no cartoon characters, anything like that, no pot leaves or joints or anything like that that shows any kind of paraphernalia. It is strictly a medical store, uh, that's what they are. So, obviously, we disagree completely with the, uh, idea that this is going to not be a good fit with that neighborhood. Uh, in turn, in, in addition to the restrictions on, uh, advertising and, uh, the visual of the store, uh, these are highly secure facilities. The regulations require certain types of locks, uh, that, uh, no one can enter the building unless they actually have a marijuana card, uh, except for certain situations, uh, marijuana cards are only for those that are twenty-one and up, um, they are only available if you get that, uh, recommended by a physician, who certifies that you have one of twenty-odd particular diagnoses that fit medical cannabis. So, this is not going to be like an issue of, you know, your local dealer hanging out in the streetlight at the corner. Again, it's a medical facility. It is highly and strictly secured, um, with, with certain types of locks, uh, there are going to be storm shutters on the windows, things like that when it's not open, uh, it's only during certain hours during the day, certain days during the week. It's a highly secured, high-security, limited-access medical store. Again, as I mentioned, this is going to be in, uh, Suite H, farthest away from the street. Uh, once these two buildings that are in this proposed, uh, strip mall area are built, it will actually not even be visible from the Bucky's. Uh, you have to take a very severe angle from somewhere else and out of the road instead of doing that. So, it's not something that is, that will, or really even can be, an attraction to children or attractive nuisance, or affect the family-friendly atmosphere of the neighborhood. Ms. Pepe is going to speak here in a minute and tell you just a little about what she does, she currently already owns three dispensaries in Hancock County. Um, I have here some pictures of future rows, uh, that we'd like entered evidence that will give y'all an idea of what these things look like, um, and how they're set up.
For those committed to commission here.
They were not.
Wow.
Limited to the record.
What's that?
You're limited to the record before the planning commission.
All right. Um, but that she does own three currently, uh, none of which have had any problems with the Department of Revenue. Uh, she's had a recent survey, uh, clear, uh, with no problems, uh, no issues with any of those. They are clean, nondescript storefronts, um, again, not going to be an eyesore. Um, and these three dispensaries currently serve literally thousands of patients, um, in the coast area, including five hundred and eighty-three who currently live in Harrison County and have to travel to Hancock in order to get their needed medical cannabis. So, that's why we're going to put one in here. And again, let's look a little closer at the neighborhood itself that this supposedly does not fit into. Again, it's one shop and a strip mall, far end of the mall, um, that also includes a liquor store and a smoke shop, uh, and possibly a backdoor store, I'm not really sure if that's been finalized or not. Um, it could easily be argued that all of these are more attractive and more dangerous to children, teenagers, things like that, uh, and the community and the atmosphere than a medical dispensary would be. Um, they're less regulated, less secure, and allowed to do much more in the way of less regulated, less secure, and allowed to do much more in the way of signage and advertising than dispensaries. Um, yet each of these has been granted conditional use to be there. Bucky's and no one else opposed any of them. They were fine with that going in, so a liquor store is being fine, but a medical cannabis dispensary is being opposed. We don't really understand the difference of why that is when we are actually medical rather than recreational and are strict, more strictly scrutinized and regulated. The county actually has also already approved another dispensary in this same neighborhood, just about three thousand feet or so south. Um, now that is actually not currently in use. They got them conditional used, but they've never actually done anything with the dispensary. It's in what is frankly a dilapidated building that even cleaned up is gonna look nothing like what Ms. Pepe's is gonna look like. Um, and, uh, so again, we've already approved one in that area. Why not this one now? Um, dispensaries aren't prohibited by law from being within a thousand feet of certain things. They, they, again, this goes into the high regulations that they have. They cannot be within a thousand feet of any church, any school, or any daycare unless they get a waiver from that particular entity to allow them to be there. Um, this proposed location is not within a thousand feet of a school or a daycare. It is within a thousand feet of a church, but Ms. Pepe has gotten a waiver from that church to allow them there. That is in the record, I believe. Um, and so, you know, there should be no problem. She's met the state requirements for being there. Um, her ABC agent has also told her that she is had, gonna have no problems being this cleared once she gets the county approval. Um, again, Bucky's is not a school, a church, or a daycare. It's a gas station. It's a very large gas station, very nice gas station, and it's a gas station. So there's no requirement that it has to be a certain distance away from Bucky's.
Your time is running out if you want.
I'll put on most.
Speak. You don't got several minutes.
Okay. So, so in, in summary of all that, uh, it's clearly a legitimate business. It fits all the requirements for conditional use. Uh, it clearly fits in with the neighborhood that's around it, and most importantly, it fits a medical need in the community. Um, we have one of Ms. Pepe's customers here, who is a member of the community, who's gonna speak on her behalf, uh, and Ms. Pepe's gonna speak and tell you a little bit about it too. For all these reasons, we ask the board grant or request a decision.
Thanks.
Can I ask him a question, Mr. Ladner?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can I ask him a question?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there any activity other than, I'm not, I, I don't know what a medical dispensary, a medical dispensary is. Is this people just picking up their prescriptions? Are they actually taking the medicine, call it that?
Technically, technically is not a prescription. A physician, as we are now, now they're, this may change as the federal law has changed, and now it allows them as a, uh, Schedule Three drug instead of Schedule One, but there's still a work in the regs for that. But currently, what happens is a physician checks you, they give you, they, they, you go in, you see your physician, and they determine whether you have one of these twenty-three diagnoses that allow you to have medical cannabis as a, as a, as a drug. You then take that recommendation to, you, you get a, call you get a medical card issued by the Department of Health. You take your card and your recommendation to the dispensary. You're only allowed a certain amount for every two weeks, or a certain amount per month, or however they do it. Um, and then you take that in, uh, and Ms. Pepe, is the way they're set up, is you walk in the lobby, there's a window at the lobby, you show them your card, that allows you access to the back room, which is a secure room. You go in that room, and you pick out what product you need.
I know, I guess maybe I was trying to, are they consuming the marijuana home?
No.
Nobody's smoking anything, nobody's taking, eating anything?
Everything is packaged. It's all packaged up.
They're taking it home. So all the activities occurring at the dispensary.
Correct.
No good to their pharmacy.
Exactly.
I was just curious. I didn't know what, I had this idea that something was going on in there.
No, it is a, it is a shop. It's a, it's a store. You go in, it's, like you said, it's a candy store. You go in, you purchase, you take it home.
Okay.
Uh, Ladner? I apologize for saying my name wrong.
I'm Pepe.
Pepe.
Alcohol-wise, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. But, um. We only have about three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. As long as it was the first medical dispensary in Hancock County, I stand prepared today to respectfully appeal, um, the recent denial of our new medical proposed dispensary on Fire Tower Road. Since the opening of my first dispensary, I have seen firsthand the transformative medical effects cannabis has on people's lives. We have consulted many first-time senior patients, helping them navigate their pain without the addictive painkillers. We are here for the veterans who have had a hard time just navigating in life. Um, they suffer from cut-off lens and PTSD. I mean, it goes on and on. It helps with leukoma. I'm just gonna keep this short, but I feel it is important to point out these patients. These are the very people amongst us every day in our community, at our grocery stores, our churches, our restaurants, our gas stations, shopping malls. We have successfully passed our recent inspections in all three stores. No complaints on any of our stores. We meet all the requirements, and we're hoping that it will give us the approval to continue to serve the people at this proposed location. But my first dispensary on Highway ninety, I'm located next door to the Seacoast Echo and next door to a karate, a children's karate place. We have had zero complaints. There's never nobody congregating in front of the store. There is zero use of anybody even opening a package in the store or outside of the store. And, um, our new location on two ninety-five Highway ninety, a church is going up right next to us after we are in. We're next to an ice cream store. There are people that accept us in the community. We are not an outcast. We are clean. We are, we hold good security. And, um, I've had a commitment with Dustin Garment, DNA Underground. Several months ago, way before construction started, the building is absolutely beautiful. We are gonna be all the way at the end in, inside the strip mall, and our, our signage will be very professional. I will even come for an approval on anything for you guys to make sure that you accept it. And, um, and that's what I wanna say. And we have, so we are hands-on with our patients. It's family-owned. Every one of my stores has an owner in there with a consultant, and, um, I just want you to know, I've been on the coast a long time. I've helped with the, even though from Louisiana, I've helped with the opening Casino Magic after Katrina, IP Hard Rock, and bringing people here to, to invest into the coast. So I'm just hoping, I'm proud to be a part of, Mississippi always growing, and I'm proud to be a part of the, um, medical cannabis industry. So I hope you consider us. We're very serious about what we do.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. One question that I would have, just, one question that I would have, in reading, this is really to the.
Yes, sir.
In reading the application, Eric, I didn't see any reference to anything in reference to the church, in just from the church. The gentleman did bring that up. Was there any testimony? I, I couldn't find anything because there is a, uh, distant regulation.
We had, we had the waiver form in the folder. I mean, it's, it's, it's in the file.
It's in the file that.
We would, we would not have accepted the application without the waiver.
Without the waiver from the church.
If they, if they, if they're within the distance and they don't have the waiver from, from whatever entity that the state law requires, we wouldn't even accept their application.
So the church gave you a waiver?
Church, there's a waiver form in the folder, yes.
With it, with the church.
It's in there. I saw it. I can.
Yeah, I missed that. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Eric. Now, the board, and one other thing, there, there is an approval for one already to just, just south of the.
Yeah, it's, it was an old discount tobacco place right across the street from the driveway into the flea market.
It isn't a, it's, it's still applicable. They could put one there.
I'll have to check the date. Their conditional use may have lapsed.
On what?
Six months with no activity.
Six months it lapsed, then it.
I would probably guess that it has lapsed, but I could, I can look that up and I can let you know, but I can't do it.
I'm sure it's lapsed because it's not something we've approved since I've been on the board.
Yeah, it probably has.
No, it, it, it's never come before this board.
And we've, we've seen no, we've seen no, uh, building permits for renovation or improvement to the, to the building itself, so.
Okay, now Chair will recognize, uh, anybody opposed to the appeal. Name and.
Yes, my name is Bill Waller. I'm a Realtor with Century Twenty-One, and I'm also a neighbor to the proposed facility. I live right down the street, and I'd like to be here in support of that. I'm having to go off.
Well, whoa, 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 if you're in support of the appeal, that time is up. I'm sorry. That time is up. At this time, Chair will recognize.
The appellant's attorney is here.
Okay, good deal. Name and address, please.
My name's Grant Tarleton. Uh, my address is one hundred Vision Drive in Jackson, Mississippi, Suite four hundred. Uh, I'm here on behalf of Bucky's, who is opening the travel center directly across from, um, the proposed cannabis dispensary. Um, we submitted a letter in response to the conditional use permit application, um, and we oppose the cannabis shop being open. Uh, I don't dispute what they say about the benefits or anything of that nature, but certain, certain businesses aren't conducive to be neighbors, and it's, um, and this is one of those. Uh, Bucky's tries to have a family-friendly atmosphere. Um, anytime you go to Bucky's, it's just full of families, and, um, the cannabis shop being directly across the street, um, my client just does not believe that would provide the environment, that would be conducive to the travel center and people wanting to go to the travel center and of that sort. Um, and so I just wanna put on the record that Bucky's is opposed to this. Not opposed to the business that, you know, at a different location, we think it would be great, but as the, um, code, you know, distance is close to, the code has in it, especially when it comes to liquor stores and other things, the importance of places where there's a lot of kids and families, there needs to be some distance of separation. And we would like that same spirit, um, to go into y'all's decision-making here when it comes to a cannabis shop being, um, near an attraction that suits itself to families.
My curiosity is killing me. I don't know.
I hope I can help you, Tim.
What do you mean by, what do you mean by it's not conducive? But if it, I can understand if it's like California where they have marijuana smoke shops and people are sitting in a, like a bar and smoking marijuana like that. I understand and would agree that's not conducive, but a medical dispensary that is not doing anything other than filling prescriptions that are consumed at home or elsewhere, how does, is it just the presence of a sign that says marijuana medical?
Well, I just think it's the, the fact, and I've read the, um, appeal documentation. There's already a smoke shop, I mean, a smoke shop and, uh, you know, it's, you have the whole row of anything, you know, drug-related that's allowed by law, um, right across the street, and this would just be one more, um, business that, um, would be in similar fashion to, um, attract a customer base we don't believe is similar to the customer base for a Bucky's Travel Center.
We had no choice in reference to the smoke shop, I would assume, since that was a commercial.
Or the liquor store.
You know, the liquor store. Well, we could add that we know. Yeah, but, uh, to answer his question, the sixth best smoke shop, we had no choice.
Yeah.
We didn't, we don't offer.
And I understand, and I know, um, medical cannabis, that whole, is a whole bucket of worms that evokes emotions on both sides, so, um, and I understand that people may have differing opinions. Uh, just from my client's point of view, the overall, we just, we just want it to be an area that is conducive to bring people in and a, a real gem for, um, South Mississippi and the state of the whole, as a whole, and it's just our opinion that allowing another, um, shop of, um, weatherly, you know, I understand it's legal, but no doubt a drug, um, would just not attract the client base that, that we're looking for.
And I don't have one of the twenty, whatever conditions to allow me to get one, so I'm not, I'm not taking anybody. If they have a fireworks shop next to the one at Baldwin Beach, that's more concerning to me than the medical marijuana dispensary.
And, you know, and I remember being asked about the liquor store at, at the zoning meeting, and I think it was up to my client. It'd be fine if that one wasn't allowed either. But, um, I appreciate y'all's time and hearing me out. Thank you all.
Any other, uh, on me? Against the appeal? Uh, I will.
Yep, yep. Against the appeal? I'm not against it. Um, I'm just, we get a chance to respond to that?
No, sir.
I just wanna say your Bucky sells alcohol. I gotta stop with autism. What's to say somebody's not grabbing alcohol for Bucky's?
Sir, please. Now, the applicant, uh, has an opportunity. If you won't let that gentleman address us in your, uh, in your response, you won't, it's up to them to whether, I know he won't speak, but you wanna.
I came here all the way today to bask in the stand. I'd like the opportunity to speak.
Y'all want him to?
We get five minutes or we just get one person?
Five, uh, you have five minutes. Maybe you can give him two or some portion of that time.
All right. I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Bill Waller. I'm a Century Twenty-One Realtor. I'm a top producer. I'm actually the, the top number one agent for Century Twenty-One of all the agents in the state of Mississippi. So I'm a shaker and a mover. I live out there by the dispensary, okay? And I've had my medical marijuana license since they first became available here in Mississippi. I've lived here since nineteen ninety-four. I'm not some convicted felon. I pay my taxes, and I'm a good neighbor, and I think they would be a good neighbor because there's a lot of people out there. And I have letters, I have a letter here from one of my other neighbors that is also licensed, and there's no reason why we can't go get our medicine that we consume at our homes right down the street from where we live. And I think if there's a liquor store and a tobacco store, which has caused all types of problems in society, I don't understand why we can't have a, a legal marijuana store. It's time to come out of the dark ages and let people get this that they need in, in the light of day. You know, it's not like they're pushing it on anybody else, but they're a taxpaying, uh, entity. They've been legalized and sanctioned by the state of Mississippi, regulated by the eight, the, the Commission on Alcohol and Tobacco and, uh, the Health Department. So I don't understand why there's a problem. Um, thank you. I appreciate you, and I'll let Ms. Pepe take that.
Thank you, sir.
I'll be quick. And I understand that, um, for the smoke shop, they meet the requirements, so you don't have to vote on it. But the liquor store, you have to vote at the Planning and Commission. The attorney for Bucky's was at the same meeting that they voted for the liquor store to be approved, and they have, as he says here that he would be against it, they have not voted against it. They're particularly just targeting the medical dispensary. And across from us on the, DNA is building another strip mall right in front of us that will block us completely from any view, and that is going to be a medical center. So this is gonna be a very nice strip mall. I mean, the place is beautiful if you ever drove by to see the new building. So, you know, just with that being said, we don't even let our patients pick up their product in the waiting room. We bring them to the back rooms. We see their card. We have topicals that people could get now without a card, but we don't even keep that in our lobby. We still keep that behind the wall window, and if they, if a non-patient over twenty-one wants a topical for their pain, we make them come to the window and we sell it through the window. We don't even let them come into the back where the actual product is. So we have, like I said, we're family, we have every safeguard, and these, most of the people that are on this, I mean, like, I could cry because I get a, we get presents, we get thanks. I mean, it's just like, it's just been a long time coming for a lot of people.
But you said the topical doesn't require a, a prescription?
No.
Did I misunderstand?
No, no, no. You are correct. Now there are topicals. There are bath salts. There are bath bombs.
But they don't, they do not require a prescription?
No prescription, no medical card. Mm-hmm. Just like in certain stores, like even Bucky's, they sell a non-nicotine with a little bit of THC in it and, and have, and they have, um, rolling paper. So I'm just saying, there are certain limits that you do not need a medical card for, but even with that, we don't keep that. You can keep the product in your lobby, but we don't do that. You come in, and it would be like going into your doctor's office or your dentist's office when you sit in the front. And, um, if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them if I can.
Any questions for?
Satisfy anybody?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Samantha.
I would like to have a clarification definitely on the one that's been approved that has expired, Eric, and, uh.
Okay.
Because then I think we get to need. If you already have one there, is there a need for another? I think that's critical.
Let me find that. Go ahead. Definitely, I'll take that just for a few minutes and then, uh.
How long will it take you? We can.
It's gonna take, it's gonna take me five minutes.
Okay. I, I'd rather get that information. Let's, let's see. Because it goes to me. You already have one, or the potential of one. All bear with us. All bear with us.
She's gonna have to pull the case number and on short staffed, so she's gonna pull, she's gonna get the case.
We just, I tell you what, we'll do the same as, uh, the motion.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get this information.
Okay.
I'm gonna get you ready.
Yes, sir. He's in a big shift.
Now, he did, well, that's his over there.
Somebody slid it in when they walked by.
Yeah.
So we gotta wait till he's back.
Yeah. I'll tell him he's back. And a thing motion. They'll have to wait now until the other supervisor gets back because we don't have a call.
You got Dan on the phone? Dan on the phone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dan is on the phone. I am sorry. Good. Thank y'all.
Yes.
That's why we have y'all here. All right, uh, Sheriff will entertain a motion to, on the, uh, appeal.
So it's your district, your, your wish is to table it till we find out the information on whether I make that motion?
I hear second, uh, by Dan.
I second that, I second that motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Same explanation, this is not an extension of the appeal, it's just simply table and a floor decision. So, uh, as the decision. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Thank you.
How will we be notified of the decision?
Uh, either Tim or, uh, County, not a straight will notify. Or we'll, or we'll notify, uh, Mr. Nolan and he will notify y'all to the zoning commission. All right, we'll go back up to the agenda. Well, y'all. I'm a. Authorizing the exemption from the county abhorrent taxes excluding the school district tax pursuant to Mississippi Code annotated section twenty-seven dash thirty-one dash one oh one, uh, nineteen seventy-two as amended to F.L. Crane and Sons Incorporated for property located at one eight six three five Nobles Road, Social Mississippi. And that's at the North Industrial Park.
Motion.
I hear second.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Do we know what?
I think she was, well, go back. She used for queues or something.
Yeah, I think so. Tell her we. Tim is not here, so we'll have to wait on that one, uh, on the seven. Audit, audit designating any board of supervisors, chancellor clerk, purchase clerk, and art department head as needed as board representatives to receive bids as listed.
This is consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I missed consent agenda, I'm sorry. Yeah, consent agenda, okay. Consent agenda, items seven through ten generally non-controversial will be considered at this time. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Number eleven, audit notch and receipt of the twenty-twenty-four real and personal property assessment rolls for the first and second judicial districts of Harrison County, Mississippi, as presented by tax assessment per section twenty-seven dash thirty-five dash eighty-one, Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two annotated.
Motion, second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit spreading up on the minutes personnel changes for the Harrison County Tax Planner's Office as listed on file with payroll clerk and, uh, human resources.
Motion, second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Now, Sheriff will take up, uh, other, uh, zoning items.
Zoning recommends concurring with the planning commission's recommendations for cases fifteen through twenty-six.
Hearing the recommendation, do I hear a motion?
Motion.
I hear second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. All right. All right, getting down to number twenty-seven, number twenty-seven. Audit concurrent with the road manager on employment as listed, uh, on file with payroll clerk and personnel department.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Will we able to find my back? Audit concurrent with county, uh, pardon, that's the one we just did, right? Number twenty-eight, no. Audit concurrent with county at military on employment as listed on file with payroll clerk and human resources department.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit spreading up on the minutes employment changes for the district attorney's office as listed with payroll clerk and personnel department. I hear motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Do I hear? Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. On, uh, sheriff recognized sheriff as he reports on number versus currently housed in the jail.
Total count of jail was seven hundred ninety-seven, one hundred and fourteen of those are state inmates, eight of them are ready to go. Eighty-two misdemeanors, nineteen federal inmates, twenty-one juveniles, and eight juveniles at juvenile detention center. All of those are Harrison County.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any questions, Sheriff? All right, continuing on, audit notch on the seat of the minutes for the meal law for the Harrison County Adult Detention Center for June twenty twenty-four.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit spreading up on minutes Harrison County Sheriff's deputies off duty employment roster.
Motion, second.
For July twenty twenty-four. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit spreading up on minutes personnel changes of sheriff's office is on file with the, at payroll clerk and human resources.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Key. Audit authorizing the purchase of four twenty-twenty-three Dodge Durango P K D V from, uh, Landers Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram from state contract number eight two zero 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 seven one two three zero, item number zero seven one oh five, uh, four zero zero two seven four to the sheriff's office. And it costs thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three dollars payable from zero zero one two hundred nine one five and authorizing a line transfer from zero zero one to eleven four thirty-two.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit authorizing disposal of assets where tax lists and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit authorizing the board president to exige the lost stolen affidavit removing the following assets and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit approving payment of tort claim as listed.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit approving claims document per Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two, nineteen thirteen twenty-seven.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Audit approving payment of the following listed claims.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit authorizing issuance of duplicate warrants as listed.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Audit spreading up on minutes following executed.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Audit notch and receipt of the monthly report showing expenditures and liabilities incurred against each separate budget item and receipt of property taxes and other revenues for the month of June twenty-four submitted by chancellor clerk, uh, 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 Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two, nineteen thirteen eleven twenty-three.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Resolution of the supervisors of Harrison County, Mississippi authorizing the employment of professionals in connection with the issuance of general obligation policy and convention center refunding fund of the county to refinance certain outstanding indebtedness of the county as described herein.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Uh, audit approving lease agreement for property in connection with the building of a public theater.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Discussion?
Is Dan, Dan, this is his district.
Dan, you got any, anything you want to say in reference to the peers?
No, sir, other than that there's a motion and if there's a second needed, that I'll second it.
I think we have a motion and a second already.
Okay. Okay, good enough.
Good enough. Thank you. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit authorizing the blood center to host a blood drive for counterstaff in the public after Mississippi, at the Aramalta Purpose Complex Conference Room, Seaway Road, Gupport, uh, Mississippi on July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Audit designated and authorized in county purchasing clerk, uh, his designate to accept the lowest and best competitive written bid solicited and received and pursue, uh, pursuant to Mississippi Code section three one dash seven dash thirteen B and a card therewith. Purchasing clerk or his or her designate shall spread any such purchase pursuant to Mississippi Code, uh, section thirty-one, seven, thirteen B on the minutes at the next meeting of the board of supervisors of Harrison County.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit finding that the twenty-twenty-four assessment rolls have been equalized for the first and second judicial district and authorizing the clerk of the board to post the proper notice have, have, uh, advising, excuse me, advising that the assessment rolls are ready for inspection by the public.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit approving the city of the Ivale temporary use of county equipment, portable stadium features needed to assist, assist in hosting the Ivale Monteau Parade on February twenty-sixth, uh, 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 March second, twenty twenty-five pursuant to the terms of the interloper government cooperation agreement.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit approving the city of the Ivale temporary use of county equipment, portable stadium needs to assist hosting the Ivale's Bass Tournament on March fourteenth through sixteen, twenty twenty-five pursuant to terms of the interloper agreement.
Motion, second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit approving the covenant agreement by and between Gupport Highlands Development LP, Gupport Highlands Office Suite One LLC, Gupport Highlands Retail One LLC, Gupport Highlands Retail Two LLC, Mississippi Development Authority in Harrison County for the real property commonly known as Gupport Highlands Development. Got any motion?
Motion, second.
Discussion? All the discussion I had, Tim had it pretty well. So the issue.
I'm sorry, I was reading ahead. I apologize.
That's, that's the Gupport Highlands covenant agreement.
Yes, that, that, or that's the covenant that, that's, uh, that was finally executed.
One, one question that I have, I'm curious. It appears in, and I could have missed in my reading. The, the covenants don't, do not require, uh, employment necessarily, uh, uh, economic, uh, disadvantage. If that's the term, I'm probably not using them right.
Well, the covenant required with, uh, questioned is what it did, so I mean, whatever they requested was what was, uh, satisfied then. So they drafted came from MDA.
It did not appear in the covenants that that fifty-one percent, uh, low in, low income, it's not in, and that's good. I mean, I'm not questioning, I just want to make sure.
I have to read it again to make sure of that. I understand, is it covered? Lou, let me look at it real clear.
Okay, no, I, I, I'm prepared to agree.
Trish, you look at it. It does not, but that is not a requirement. They have used the previous numbers that they've accumulated to satisfy the, on the low mod portion.
That's what I'm talking.
Because they kept replacing them so that, 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 the covenants will get us through.
The covenants were drafted by MDA to satisfy.
I want to get it done. I'm not, I'm just curious the fact that low mod, that's the only thing, but.
They, they kept using those numbers right when they were, were, uh, hires at Clayburn Hills and the ones at that previous healthcare.
Right.
They somehow.
I don't, I don't need to make an issue. I, I'm just curious. Good, thank you. All in favor, signify by aye. Uh, those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit adjudicating the employment of Tempsy Holloman, Voice Holloman Association, uh, associates to represent Harrison County board of supervisors and the manner of the sit below.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, uh, motion carries. Audit approving travel as listed.
Motion, second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Audit approving sponsorship, Voice Scouts of America Pineboro Area Council for fiscal year twenty twenty-five authorized a Mississippi Code annotated eleven thirty-one, nineteen seventy-two amendment, the amount of four thousand dollars payable from oh oh two one hundred five twenty-two. Is, is that a escrow account?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. Well, it is an escrow account.
It is?
And, and, no, this is traditionally what we have done every year for the voice count.
And we authorize to do that through general budget, aren't we, Tim?
That's correct. Yes.
Um, we can change that account number, get it out of the.
I mean, I, I was, yeah.
Okay.
I don't.
Sound good.
Well.
Yeah, they authorize to do it through general.
Okay. One double check.
Okay.
We need to revise it. Tim, will you do that?
The escrow account is not, I mean, I'm just trying to make sure we're on the record. It's just a line item budget supervisor, doesn't change anything as to where the funds come.
What I'm saying, Tim, that this is authorized statutorily to contribute to the voice count.
That's correct.
This is not a advertising county resource and that's why I want to clarify.
That is correct.
It is absolutely authorized to contribute to the voice count.
Right.
We're okay with that.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries.
We didn't have first and second.
Yeah, that's what I said.
We didn't have first and second.
We didn't have first or second.
We sent first and second now. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Thank you. Audit adjudicating authorizing incentive to establish necessary to advertise and bring into favor will notice the opportunities, possibilities, and resources of Harrison County Mississippi, including all forms of advertising, including but not limited to broadcast, advertise, or no-go recognition on publicity collateral, other media, and all broadcast printed materials and signage along with the link displayed by Harrison County online.
Motion, second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, no, the motion carries. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, no, the motion carries. Here, you got anything?
No.
Holly?
Yes, sir. I would request that we adjourn into executive session to departments, law enforcement, and administration.
Personnel.
Personnel, personnel matter. Okay. Let's come back to that. We'll finish out.
Okay.
And we'll come back. Nathan?
I have nothing.
I do. I have one, I have advertised the county resources for a back-to-school giveaway, including hygiene products in the school, which was, uh, uh, general on, on staff, on, on, at the location for, um, checking the cabbages in amount of fifteen hundred dollars.
Okay, that's informed. Motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, no, the motion carries. Uh, that's it. I have a couple items. Number one, I'd like to re, uh, appoint, reappoint Carolyn Hamilton to the Memorial Hospital.
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Who's it?
Carolyn Hamilton.
Carol.
Yeah. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries. One other thing, I know we've had discussions in, in reference to needing a, uh, someone that has a license for construction.
Yes.
And that would help the county
Tremendous.
Pardon?
Tremendous.
Yeah, tremendously, for, for some of the work we've done. Bobby Triscleire has agreed to do the studying and possibly get that license. Only thing he's requesting, of course, is that we would pay for any expenses involved in doing that. So I would recommend that we do that so we don't have to go hiring, uh, uh, these folks to stamp those things.
I'll second that.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none, nor any more. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Just, uh, House, got anything? Listen, try, try. Yeah?
You want to take up the Huber tax request for a tax refund on this table?
Okay.
Uh, I did talk with, uh, with the tax assessor and the tax collector, and I'm advised by the tax assessor that Huber did bring it to the attention of the tax assessor's office in early, early two thousand twenty-one, which would then bring it, they made a claim to get a refund through the tax assessor's office of the error that would bring it within the three-year statute of limitations and they're entitled to be refunded.
Okay, Chair will entertain a motion, take it off the table first. Do I hear a motion?
Motion second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Now Chair will entertain a motion to, uh, to grant the request by Huber Corporation for a tax refund.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries.
I don't have anything else. Lieutenant has any question?
Chair will entertain a motion going to executive session to departments of personnel issue.
Yes.
Okay.
Administration.
The motion.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Thank y'all.
She did give me the case number. They, they did give me the number twenty-three. I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just go pull the files and get back to office, make sure they haven't done any extensions.
Okay.
That way then they follow my table.
If, if, if that's the tentering, you know, they still, we don't have a need to, okay, not right there. And I think we've got some, uh,